Okay Provost, that's the live stream underway.
Good morning. This is a special meeting of Stirling Council. First, a brief statement of the protocols that will be followed during this remote meeting. Please note that the meeting is being broadcast live on the Council's YouTube and a recording will be available for public viewing following the meeting. Members should activate their cameras. Your microphone should be switched on when invited to speak and switched off when you have finished. This is important as it helps to ensure the quality of the audio for all present. Please use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak and lower it when you have finished speaking. The time limits for speaking are set out in standing orders as follows. Five minutes for proposing a motion, three minutes for seconding a motion and three minutes for summing up. I'm now going to ask the clerk to carry out a roll call of the elected members present. Julia.
Sorry Provost, I'm going to ask David McDougall if he has switched on the backup recording. He's now doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Benison.
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Benny.
I'm here.
Councillor Barrow.
Present.
We've got apologies from councillor Brisley. Councillor Davis.
Oh yeah, I'm here.
Councillor Dodds.
Present.
Councillor Errol.
Present.
Councillor Farmer.
Present.
Councillor Flanagan.
Present.
Councillor Gibson.
Present.
Councillor Houston.
Present.
Councillor Hutchison.
Present.
Councillor Keane.
Present.
Councillor Laurie.
Present.
Councillor McPherson.
Yeah.
Councillor Majuri.
Present.
Councillor McDonald.
Present.
Councillor McGill.
Presence.
Councillor Oxborough.
Present.
Councillor Simpson.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Tomasz.
Are you around here?
And we have apologies for councillor Tweet. So councillor Tweet and councillor Brisley, we have apologies for them. Thank you Provost.
Thank you. This is a requisition meeting and the requisition which specifies a business to be discussed is a motion on the National Health and Wellbeing Survey proposed by councillor Flanagan and seconded by councillor Benny. Councillor Flanagan, would you like to propose your motion?
Thanks Provost. Can I thank members for coming along to this meeting and also to say that I am very sorry that it's come to this. We had hoped that this important matter could have been discussed and considered at either the last meeting of Children and Young People Committee or at the full council meeting we had last week. I'm sure many members have had a lot of correspondence from parents concerned about the National Health and Wellbeing Survey. The parents I've spoken to are concerned by what they've seen in the press, online and most importantly, what they've heard from their children coming home from school. It's even reached the Children's Commissioner who last week raised their concerns about the survey and whether it's an invasion of privacy. Concerns have been raised across Scotland with several councils adjusting the survey to take into account some of the concerns. And some of these were based upon concerns raised by staff and actually pupils themselves. What we're asking for here is the opportunity to scrutinise this important decision and to make sure that the important thing here is that parents, young people and our citizens get the assurance that the council has scrutinised and considered the survey appropriately. It would have been better to have done this before the survey was in schools and before it'd been mostly completed. However, we should need to concentrate on the motion at hand. It's vital that the scrutiny happens through the normal democratic processes of the council and hence why we feel this must be considered at either committee or full council and not in a private members briefing where the public cannot hear what's being discussed nor what their elected representatives' views are. The rights and wrongs of the National Health and Wellbeing Survey are not the matter before us today. This debate is purely whether we should discuss these matters and the concerns expressed and my colleagues and I believe we should. I'm also very keen to make clear my belief that proper scrutiny does not undermine the position of officers nor does it imply any lack of trust. We have the utmost respect for our officers and full confidence in their decisions that they make. It's a core responsibility of a councillor to scrutinise and we should all take great pride and care in doing that endeavour. It's a process that I would have thought would have been sought and welcomed and therefore I encourage members to support our motion and hence I propose the motion Provost.
Thank you. Councillor Benny, you've seconded the motion. Do you wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right to speak Provost.
Thank you. Councillor McGill.
Thank you Provost. I just would like to make a comment if that's okay.
Go ahead.
So the lives of the children and young people today are unique and complex and challenging. The highly pressured circumstances many of our young people in the communities experience differ greatly from young people of previous generations. We acknowledge the unique importance of positive loving parental support, including that of extended family and the child's or young person's wider community. There's significant and excellent work going on in schools and nurseries and the much wider partner group striving to meet the needs of Stirling's young people. Providing the correct support, advice and guidance is essential to our young people who require it to build resilience and healthy and productive lives. However, in order to offer the necessary type of support, advice and guidance, it's essential to identify what is required, not only to the children, young people, but to parents, carers and extended family members who all too often find it very difficult to find a specific and necessary support when needed. I have spoke to many parents who are really struggling with young people who are facing challenges. So the only accurate way to gather this information is to ask the young people who are living the experience. This can be achieved by offering a non-compulsory health and wellbeing census allowing young people, if they wish, to confidentially give their views and experiences. Highlighting which areas and types of support and guidance would be beneficial. In recent years, we have seen the benefits of an in-depth analysis into the review of children and young people who have experience of living in care and how these results have necessitated a complete change in the direction and the delivery of the service and support offered and quite rightly so. We weren't getting it right before, but we're now able to put things in place to get it right now because we know what these young people had experienced. The importance of gathering health and wellbeing information cannot be underestimated. Children and young people in Stirling and around the country are not living in an episode of The Waltons or a needed light novel. It's not news that child abuse, child sexual exploitation happen. There is no age limit on human trafficking or gender-based violence and we all know teenage pregnancies occur. We know the majority of mental health difficulties experienced by adult population begin in childhood and adolescence. We are all acutely aware of the huge difficulties, the long waiting list it comes is and the high levels of additional stress this is causing to families. We will all no doubt have families in our ward who are in this position. Scottish government have recently allocated significant funding for extra support in mental health. We now have school councillors and mental health support in the communities are building up. This all takes time to develop and it takes time for us to see any positive results. The only way this was able to be done because a need was identified. The Health and Wellbeing Census is an opportunity to identify where the need is so services and supports can be developed, targeted and evaluated to address the need. What is the alternative? We cannot stick our collective heads in the sand or stick our fingers in our ears while shouting, "We don't want to know". Elected members across all political leaders should refrain from unnecessary politicising this sensitive and essential information gathering exercise. Had this been a topic as urgent business at either Children's Young People Committee or council, the disadvantages would have been that Stirling Council's standing orders governs the time limits on discussion and question and therefore a detailed briefing had been arranged. So the briefing was arranged to ensure all elected members were offered the correct information on the process and the need of the Health and Wellbeing Census. This was supported by colleagues from NHS, from secondary school head teacher and young people from two Stirling High Schools. And it was unfortunate only sub-elected members were able to attend this briefing. It may be uncomfortable for us to acknowledge all that I've said, but it's essential if we are to do our duty, we are advocates for those we are elected to serve, to do otherwise would be negligent. I acknowledge some parents may have questions regarding aspects of the Health and Wellbeing Census. I would encourage those who do, as some have hitherto, contact Stirling Council's interim head of education who will be happy to answer any questions they may have. Have an interest of transparency, I welcome the opportunity to discuss this further at a special Children and Young People Committee and this will be arranged at the next available opportunity. Thank you Provost.
Thank you. Councillor Tomasz.
I think what's just been said supersede my question, but I had a point of, okay, exonerating the order and it was at this special meeting that's now looked like it's going to take place. Does that committee have any... Can it pass a motion or is it just a discussion?
We're talking about the meeting in the requisition which is the Children and Young People Committee.
Yeah, that's correct. I just wanted to know what is, what are the, okay, the powers of that committee?
Motion should be passed at that committee.
Yes.
Yeah. Councillor Benison.
Thank you. I've got concerns over this Health and Wellbeing Census. I have a number of my constituents for a number of reasons. One being the very fact that it's called a census concerns me. Next year in Scotland, every adult in the country will have a legal duty to complete the national census and to call this questionnaire a census insinuates it's mandatory to fill it in. I share concerns with parents around data protection and safeguarding of the children's data and identity. It's my understanding the children give their SQA candidate number and therefore the SQA, our government body, will be able to identify that child. I also have serious concerns over any public body or lobby group who may have access to the data for whatever reason the Scottish government sees fit. And how long will the data be kept? These are questions that the SG, sorry, the Scottish government, not SG, I call that, have concerns. These are, sorry, there's been no response from the Scottish government on these concerns and we need to know the answers to these questions. There's also the question of what support is in place for children who may be triggered by answering these questions. Again, that's not been answered. And going back to data protection, I should remind senior management officers that earlier this year it was brought to my attention that a school in Stirling had breached GDPR regulation when a similar questionnaire was sent to their school pupils. So please don't sit there and tell elected members that there's nothing to see here, that this is operational and it doesn't concern us. The briefing not supplied to elected members was also very telling to me. Regarding setting the questions, it seems the Scottish government, COSLA, academics, whoever they were, helped to set the questions. It was most noticeable to me that parents did not seem to be involved at all and that is typical of how Scottish government treat parents. From a very early age in Scotland, children are told their rights, what they're entitled to, what they should expect, what they deserve. But children need boundaries, they need rules, they need to learn right from wrong. Yet in Scotland, it's the parents who receive a list of dictates from the Scottish government on how to bring their children up. What they should say, what they should think, what they should do, how they should discipline their children. They even tried to introduce the named person act in a further attempt to reduce parents' rights, though this looks to everyone to be introduced by the back door in the latest teacher's guidance for transgender children. Another SNP bin fire if ever I saw one. SG does not need a faceless census to know what is wrong in Scottish schools these days. Teach children about healthy relationships with alcohol, drugs, consent, sex and contraception. Teach young people that learning about healthy relationships and consent won't be done on Pornhub. The issue of children and young people being able to access online porn must also be addressed across the whole UK. Scotland has a mental health crisis which is not being addressed. Fix the problems that we know already exist. This questionnaire is a distraction from the problems currently staring everyone in the face already.
Thank you. Councillor Barrow.
Yeah, thank you Provost. I have a question for councillor McGill if I may. Now, in the script that councillor McGill read out, she very carefully avoided the key point that councillor Flanagan had raised about transparency and openness and scrutiny and the rights of councillors to have a say in what's being done in their name. But leaving that aside, she did say that if parents had concerns then the right thing for them to do would be to address them to the Education Department. So can I ask her, if a parent approached the Education Department and said they wanted to see this survey in full, they wanted to know what it was, what questions their children would be answering, would that survey be provided to the parents? Because my understanding is this being regarded as being confidential, not fit for parents to see. So if I'm wrong in that, I'd be delighted to be corrected.
Can I remind you all that the motion is, agrees, that the council agrees to hold a special meeting of the Children and Young People Committee? And I think we're straying from that motion.
With respect Provost, I'm asking a question just basically exactly on what councillor McGill said. She said it, I'm asking a question on her words.
I'll allow, I'm going to allow the question, but can I remind you all the motion, the terms of the motion that we are debating? We're not debating the content, we're debating whether or not we should hold a special, whether or not we should hold a meeting of the Children and Young Persons Act, Children and Young Persons Committee. Councillor Keane.
Provost, I'm happy to hold back.
Sorry Provost, apologies for interrupting. Sorry, could you just confirm your ruling? Was my question inadmissible? The question about what councillor McGill said?
No, but councillor McGill has put her hand up, but she's not next in the line. The next in the line is councillor Keane. I will allow councillor McGill to respond to your question, but I want to hear councillor Keane first.
Provost, just to keep the narrative going in a sensible, I'm happy to give way to councillor McGill first if you would prefer and then I'll come in with my point.
Right, councillor McGill.
Thank you Provost. The answer to councillor Barrow's question is that responses are confidential. And in response to councillor Benison's comments, all these issues would have been discussed at the briefing, but we're very happy to do it again at Children and Young People Committee so as all these things can be discussed.
Thanks for that. Can I just confirm then Provost, from what councillor McGill has said, that the questions in the survey are available to all parents and presumably available to councillors and presumably in the public domain effectively?
Councillor McGill.
Yes, I would think that that was right, but Benny has got her hand up, she'll have found more detail on that than I will.
I think we're straying into the area of discussing, Julia. Can I have a ruling on this?
Yes Provost, I would advise, I think you are, and this is just a motion by members and the protocol is motion, debate. So that this wouldn't be an appropriate juncture which to cross-examine. Cross-examine hopefully is the wrong word, but sometimes I think we get to that, to ask officers questions and you're absolutely correct Provost and your advice to members, the matter on the table is purely a decision about whether to refer this matter to CYP where of course a full discussion can take place.
Thank you. Councillor Keane.
Thank you Provost. You know, there's an awful lot of scripted information and input going here today. Obviously everyone's spent a lot of time considering this. I'd like to speak as a parent if I can for a minute with the two kids at high school. You know, I could weep at the opportunities that they've missed over the last couple of years of the pandemic. I could, I despair at some of the opportunities all of our kids have missed. It's tough being a teenager. It's even tougher being a teenager at the moment. And I, as a parent, struggle through the day as most parents do. Whether you've got kids that are teenagers now, whether you've had kids that are teenagers, whether you're going to have kids that are teenagers, it's a struggle. You just hope that you're doing the right thing and you just hope that you're going to be able to get them through all of this. And help and support is to be welcomed and I look at what's going on in Stirling High with my kids. What a phenomenal team we've got, what a phenomenal bunch of professionals we have trying to assist me to get my kids to become the participating adults that I know them to be. But our phenomenal professional supporters, they need good data. They need to be able to ask kids questions that perhaps I can't. And you know, I don't think any parent really wants to discuss an awful lot of these matters where their kids are going to find it comfortable. So if you've got someone who can support you in raising your kids and it takes a village and all of the rest of it, then I think we should support that. I think the Scottish government, as is usually the case, hasn't been particularly good at supporting this survey with information. I think parents are a little bit concerned and there's a vacuum being filled by politicised behaviour which, to be fair, I can see going on here today. You know, I attended a briefing for an hour and a bit on Wednesday where there were pupils, high school pupils who'd taken the survey. There was a head of education, there was teachers, there was head teachers. And I note there was about five of us there. None of the Conservatives turned up at it. Councillor Benison wasn't there. Councillor Tomasz was there. And today I feel so much better informed and I feel that I have the knowledge to say that whilst I'm uncomfortable with this survey, I don't want to get in the way of professionals doing their job and that's what we have to navigate this fine line here. So I say to all of my colleagues on the table, where were you on Wednesday? You know, you could have came on Wednesday and still came today and made your points. There was no reason not to educate yourself at the briefing. So as a parent, I am uncomfortable with the questions. I really am. I've read the survey and some of the questions, they're difficult, but that's why I'm glad the schools are asking them. Because if it helps my kids, if it helps your kids, if it helps all of our kids get through school, which is not the easiest thing and we all remember it, then let's be supportive. Let's do the scrutiny councillor Flanagan. You're absolutely correct. We must scrutinise. But there is more than a whiff of politicising around what we're doing today and that's getting in the way of the professionals doing their job. So let's maybe take a step back, let's go for the committee, let's hear what everybody else is saying, but let's recognise that there is a little bit of politics going on today and that's not helping our kids. That's all I've got to say Provost.
Thank you. Councillor Tomasz.
Okay, thank you. I'm supporting the motion, but I was concerned that the lack of numbers of the councillors at the briefing because I think there was an excellent opportunity to do both things, to hear from pupils and we heard from pupils. And at the briefing, okay, I had the opportunity. And at the briefing, okay, I had the opportunity to ask direct questions to pupils, which I think is good. And I want to thank the officers for the input and, okay, the time they put into that. And I certainly learnt a lot from that. That doesn't mean, though, that perhaps we needed to have had this, a discussion in a public, okay, arena, which the committee is. I don't think as a council we should be afraid of that. I think we should embrace it and use every opportunity to do it, whilst understanding the divisions of responsibilities within the council, and what are officers' responsibilities and what are the councillors' responsibilities. So I support the motion, but I regret those people who didn't come, because I think that would have been a useful thing for them to do.
Thank you, councillor Houston.
Thank you, Provost. Like councillor Tole, I attended the briefing and I found it very, very helpful indeed, and gave me more information to be able to engage positively with any constituents. And there haven't been many who have been in contact, asking questions about it. So I feel more informed to be able to go back to them. Having read the questionnaire, because I have read it, like councillor King and others who attended the meeting, the questions are challenging, and it was interesting that one of the young people fed back to us that those questions that they chose not to answer, because it's their right to do it. But, you know, through all our engagement with young people over the years as corporate parents, et cetera, every time you engage with young people, they tell us, you know, talk to us, ask us our opinion, don't do things to us, listen to us, that's the constant refrain that we get. And, you know, amongst our team, we've got excellent experts in child education, psychology, the health, the mental health of children. And I think we have to trust them to do this. Now, you know, when you set about doing things, when you say this is just the right thing to do, you don't perhaps necessarily think about, you know, or is there somebody going to take a sort of political view of this and make hay and run with it? And unfortunately, I think that's what's happening throughout the country in some places. And I think we're seeing it reflected here as well. I'm in favour of the motion, let's bring it to the committee, let's have it discussed. But if we wanted to really engage, help our constituents understand the process, perhaps attending the briefing would have been the right thing to do, as well as discussing it at the open forum at the Children and Young People's Committee. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you. Julia.
Thank you, Provost. I just felt it was appropriate to give members a little bit of governance advice and to explain the backdrop to officers' delegation around this. Now, as many members have acknowledged, the Chief Education Officer has the delegation to deal with matters such as this and a whole host of matters under the Education Act. Now, there is a control mechanism on all of our delegations as officers. And one of them is around if a matter is to become controversial, and we see that it will be controversial, then we should be engaging with members, whether it should be convener and vice convener, et cetera. However, and I think councillor Houston has pretty much made this point, at the point in time, and talking to Bryony about this this week, the Chief Education Officer had no idea where this would go in terms of entering into the political arena, had no idea that this would become controversial. Hence, she was operating quite appropriately and correctly under her delegated powers. And we've come to this because, you know, interest has gathered amongst the public and has entered the public arena. So the decision of an officer was quite correct at the time. And as members know, Stirling Council has engaged in the survey, and the survey is completed, and I think at many levels in schools. So it's just to explain to members, you know, how the delegation would have operated. And if we hadn't known at the time, then that would have been a different matter, and members... Councillor Barrow, you're looking very quizzical, but I'll finish my point. And members would have been consulted, just to explain that to members.
Provost, can I raise a point of order? I know that the clerk is obviously trying, is trying to be helpful, and much of what she said was very helpful, but I think I should be absolutely clear. The motion that I've seconded today in no way questions the judgment or the actions of officers. I think it's quite important, we've got to be careful here that we, A, we stick to the code of conduct, and B, we don't put officers at risk of the, under the terms of the guidance for officers from COSLA. I think, just to be absolutely clear, there is no question here about the judgment of officers, which we entirely respect. I think I just wanted to make that absolutely clear after the comments that the clerk just made.
Right. I think we have to proceed with this business. I think we have to just go on with this and get through it. Councillor Benison.
Thank you. Just to add, the one reason I didn't go to the briefing was because I was actually spending the afternoon with my daughter, because she only has one day off a week, so I'm not going to apologise for not attending a briefing. And instead being an actual parent. And one other thing I wanted to raise was, I did actually ask for a written question at council on this issue, but it was deemed to be out with the time that it was to be sent by. So my question wasn't able to be answered, which is why I'm going to support this motion today for it to be discussed. I do think that ten councils across Scotland have raised concerns over this questionnaire, and they have actually, some of them have actually altered the questions. And my concern is that Stirling Council didn't consult with any elected members, other than maybe the convener and vice convener on these issues. And I feel that other elected members should have been consulted on this, particularly as it was going to be sent across all schools. And I do feel that the officers and elected members involved should have known that it would cause some controversy and some concerns to parents. So it should have been brought to the attention of all the elected members across council.
Thank you, councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Provost. This is a very sensitive subject and a very sensitive survey by the Scottish Government. And I do recognise the need to collect some of this data. I question the extent of the data, but what I wanted to ask was, will the data that we hold on our servers, apparently that's how we collect it, be submitted to the Scottish Government for that CYP meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson.
Thank you very much, Provost. I'd just like to correct one particular point that's been made. It was actually councillor Flanagan's opening remark, and it was a remark later made by councillor Barrow as well, which was in relation to the kind of decision-making around this, and the impression that there's people out to kind of stifle democracy or prevent things being debated or discussed or whatever. And there was one particular misrepresentation on social media that claimed that it was the SNP Labour administration refusing to hear this out or whatever. And I really do think that needs to be scotched, because it's quite simply not the case. If any councillors, councillor Flanagan or any others wanted it to be discussed at the committee, they could have put a motion up in proper time. Clearly, they didn't do so. If they wanted it to be discussed at council, they could have put a motion up in proper time, and clearly would have done so. And even councillor Benison's question, had it come in in proper time, the question would have been asked and answered. So that's three occasions when those that are criticising things have simply failed to follow the proper timescales for something that has been around for months, it's been in the media for weeks. And the impression was given that some of it was a political decision to kind of stifle debate, when actually, Provost, it was your decision. So I would like to put on record my defence of your decision in relation to an item of urgent business, because that's what you were tasked to decide. Is this matter a matter of urgent business? And it quite clearly can't be urgent business if it's been in the papers for weeks and on government websites for months. So I would just like to put on record, Provost, that I believe, and I think probably most members, you know, actually probably all members would reflect and think, actually, was that an item of urgent business? No, I don't think any of us could really strongly argue that that was the case. If members had put it up in proper time, it would have been discussed. And even if not, you can requisition a special meeting, and here we are, at requisition of special meeting. Nobody's out to stifle anything, we're here talking about it. Everyone, so far as I've heard, has indicated they're happy to support the motion that's there to get this discussed at Children and Young People Committee. We're all agreed on that, it seemed to me today, Provost. So I think this is going to be passed unanimously. Thank you.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Provost. Yeah, there seemed to be some discussion about the attendance at the briefing. Like councillor Benison, I too had childcare responsibilities, and it was called at quite short notice. So I would love to attend, but actually conflicting duties prevented me from attending. And I'll just echo the comments that, I think, discussion of this topic is very welcome, and I look forward to the motion being passed.
Thank you, councillor Benny.
Thanks, Chair, in seconding the motion. It does seem like we're all agreed, so I think we can almost put a pin in this now. The important thing here is that I think that the points that councillor McGill made were very interesting and useful, and I think the points that councillor King made were equally valid and useful. And I think that those are things that I would like to discuss in the context of a committee meeting. And just to respond directly to the comments that councillor Gibson made about the process here, a section 16 motion is effectively a way of getting the council to do something. So whether it is a motion to congratulate the Olympic team or a motion to fundamentally restructure the way that we collect folks' bins, say, you know, you can put a section 16 motion up to change something. A section 16 motions aren't really designed for scrutiny. And in effect, an urgent item where we ask officers to bring forward information so that we can ask questions and get our assurances about things, is really the only mechanism whereby members of the opposition parties can request matters to be brought forward by officers, other than the rather circuitous route that we've taken here to hold a meeting about holding another meeting, which I'm sure many, anybody who's watching, if the dwindling numbers of people who are watching are still there, might be a little bit mystified about that particular aspect of things. But I think that the important thing here is that there will be an opportunity, because it sounds like there is agreement, that there should be an opportunity for everyone to be able to discuss this, and for officers to bring forward that information to committee. Because it's one thing for us to bring forward a motion, because that does politicise everything. And I'm trying to take the politics out of this, because the politics don't need to happen here. Politics can happen in the press, it can happen on social media, whatever. The important thing here is that we get the assurance that the kind of information that we're collecting is secure, the kind of information that we're collecting is accurate, the kind of information that we're collecting is proportionate, and what are we going to use that for? And get that understanding at committee. Because I think the other thing I would say in terms of the briefing is, yes, yes, there were no Conservatives at the briefing. It must be great to be retired, by the way, and be able to go to all these briefings. It's fantastic. I'm not sure if we should put a structure on councillors having to be retired people to be able to go to briefings. But the fact here is that there is a point at which a briefing isn't really adequate. It has to go to committee, things have to be discussed openly and transparently. And I think that that's my aversion to briefings with regards to this. I know that our colleagues in our twin town in Florida have a restriction that they are not allowed to discuss council business at all outside of open meetings. I wouldn't quite go that far, but certainly it is something which is always alive to me that when we have our considerations and discussions, they should be in full view of the public. And I think that that's right, and I think that that's appropriate. And Provost, in saying all that, it does sound like we're all agreed. So I think, you know, I mean, I think we can probably move on. Let's see a few more hands up, but I note that both of those people have already made contributions during this debate. And I know you have power to do what you will on these matters.
Are you proposing a procedural motion that the question is now put to the vote?
No, Provost, that's not what I was proposing.
I'd be very happy to propose that, Provost, if that helped. I'd be very happy to propose a procedural motion, that the motion be put.
Right. This is a procedural motion that the question is now put to the vote. Procedural motions will be moved, seconded and put without debate. Is there a seconder?
I'll say that, Provost.
Thank you. Julia.
Provost, could I raise a point of order, please? I can actually only see one hand up, and it would probably take longer to go through a roll call vote than listen to the one hand that's up, and then we move on.
Perhaps not.
Well, Jeremy, be kind, if Provost allows.
We've got a procedural motion that the question is now put to the vote, which has been seconded. I think I'm right in thinking, Julia, that this must now go to the vote?
Yes, you are correct, Provost, unless the member wished to withdraw their motion, but I'll proceed to take the vote if you're agreeable to that. Councillor Benison.
Sorry, what is it we're voting on here? Is this to vote to the vote?
On the motion.
Or to continue the debate?
We're voting, so we're voting to put the matter to the vote straight away without any further debate.
Okay, against.
Councillor Benny.
In principle, against.
Councillor Barrow.
Against.
Councillor Davis.
Against.
Councillor Dodds.
Against.
Councillor Arrow.
Against.
Councillor Farmer.
For.
Councillor Flanagan.
Against.
Councillor Gibson.
My instinct is against, but I noticed that two people have put their hands down, but I'll go by against in case that was an accident on their part.
Councillor Houston.
For.
Councillor Hutchison.
Against.
Councillor King.
Against.
Councillor Laurie. Councillor McPherson.
For.
Councillor Majuri.
Against.
Councillor McDonald.
Abstained.
Councillor McGill. Councillor Oxborough.
Against.
Councillor Simpson.
For.
Councillor Thompson.
For.
Councillor Tolemanish.
Against.
The motion is defeated thirteen seven with one abstention. Thank you, Provost. Thank you. That means that we now continue with the debate. Councillor McPherson.
Yeah, thanks for that, Provost. I'm sorry, this is very much an operational matter, and I don't think, kind of, the public worker here knew the scheme of delegation, this is blatant politics that the Tories are playing with us. I share some of the concerns. I consider myself very liberal, not a social conservative at all, but there's a scheme of delegation, and Julia made very, very clear, and this tramps all over it. And, you know, very careful, when the last two or three meetings I've attended, you have definitely been out to undermine our officials, you have a real important role to play. So I can't say I'm happy with the survey with some of the questions on it. I do trust the judgement of our officials doing it. And, you know, I'm quite happy to leave it at that, to be honest with you, Provost. But at the end of the day, and I've only been contacting maybe two or three parents about this, and I've told them quite clearly, see if you're uncomfortable with it, just put it in the bin. That's simple, that's how simple it is to sort that. And for people to politicise what the Tories are doing by calling the special meeting, it's quite shameful. And no wonder our officers are probably feeling undervalued. This is a blatant attempt to undermine officials here. And I've got to pick up councillor King as well, but not politicising this issue. Then he goes on to criticise the Scottish Government. It's outrageous. But, you know, I can't say I'm happy with the direction of Provost, but I'm very happy to leave this official. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPherson. Councillor King.
Yeah, just to say, that's another time, I've got councillor McPherson's ire, I see a pattern emerging, I suspect for every meeting we have between now and May, for some reason, he's going to raise that he doesn't like what I say.
I don't think that's appropriate. Councillor McGill.
Thank you, Provost. I don't really see we're getting any discussion about what's actually on the table here. This just seems to be a total farce now.
We have strayed from the terms of the motion. Councillor McDonald.
All I wanted to ask if my question was going to be answered or it had to be answered later, that was all.
It'll be answered later. Councillor Flanagan, would you like to sum up?
Yeah, just to say, I'm glad that there seems to be a unanimous consent for this here. And also to make clear that, as I said in my opening statement, we have the utmost respect for the officers, the decisions they take. And all this motion sought to do was to bring it to committee so that the public would be able to hear the discussion and also hear what their elected members had to say. That's it.
Thank you. I'm irate in thinking that we are in agreement on the motion. Am I right in thinking that we are in agreement on the motion? Are there any voices?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Nope, we've agreed. Thank you very much. The motion is passed. Now, that concludes the business of the meeting. But this was the last full council meeting of 2021, and before we disperse. I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of our officers and staff for their hard work over the year in meeting with the many unprecedented challenges that we have faced and maintaining the delivery of our services to the people of Stirling. I would also like to thank elected members for their participation and perseverance. And I wish you all a happy Christmas and a peaceful and healthy new